Are you full time, huh?
Hope you saw who you want to look.
You don't like him, right?
(laughing). The human animals, the brains of the rising.
(inaudible).
Mr. Moran, you're on.
The mic's live? Maybe. Hello?
I don't need to share anything.
Last time they were too loud. But I think they're good evening, everybody. So we just came out of a non-public meeting. And then we're moving on to the public hearings for tonight. So what was that, bub? Okay. I would like to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited, and just as for all.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we sit in a non-public meeting minutes dated 11/12.
A second.
Mr. Ryan.
Aye.
Mr. Marshon.
Aye.
Mr. Gibbons.
Aye.
Mr. Papa Christus.
Aye.
Mr. Eddy.
Aye.
And Mr. Moran.
Aye.
Got your numbers.
So the first thing on the agenda tonight is Jordan and Marissa Piper requested a public hearing for a retail home-based business at 14 Heath Street in New Hampshire. The property is referenced as tax map 10, block two, block 37. So this has been continued twice. Ms. Roudin, do you have any comments on the supplemental information that was provided?
Not specifically. I would suggest that you have Mr. Piper just do an overview of the information that he supplied, which is fairly extensive.
Okay. And a quick question. We've received jurisdiction on this quite a while ago. Do you know that?
It was September 24th.
September 24th, thank you.
So you're still within the 65 day period?
Thank you. Mr. Piper, do you want to kind of give a brief overview of the additional information that?
Sure. I'll read from the key points that are listed online, and I believe everyone has received at this point. Standard business hours are Monday through Sunday, seven to four. Livestock drop-off hours are Monday through Saturday, nine to three, and are by appointment only. There are no plans to hire employees at this time. Pneumatic captive bolt stunners will be utilized for near humane culling unless otherwise permitted by the town chief of police. Liquid waste is captured in underground basin slash tank and, as is required by the Hampshire Department of Agriculture, and has no direct runoff. Solid waste is captured in a dumpster that is emptied weekly. I have a contract attached from K-Town disposal. Odor will be mitigated by the emptying of the dumpster weekly. Pests and predators are managed and kept at bay on property and neighboring large guardian dogs and farm cats. Noise produced by the business will be no different from that which is produced by a small farm in a rural neighborhood, and the business will provide a valuable service to the local community and will not disrupt or detract from rural farm-centric atmosphere of the neighboring neighborhood and town.
Thank you. Do you have any other? There's quite a bit of information in this packet. Do you have any other points you want to mention?
I do not, but again, welcome questions.
Okay. Thank you. Jen or Jim, anything?
Just that you did receive two communications of abutters or concerned citizens. You can go through that when you get to public comment. If at some point we get to a potential consideration of the application, I do have some draft language for the board's consideration, but that can wait until you do any board questions or public comments.
Okay.
Mr. Piper, there's been talk, a couple different things about the amount of animals being dropped off. So according to this new one, you said up previous there was up to 10 medium to large animals. Now you're proposing two to six medium to large animals. Which is it?
It's variable depending on business. For large animals, again, it's I can only do so much work in a week. The, anything more than 10 per week is we're talking poultry.
So we're not talking per day, but per week?
Oh, per week. No way, per week.
Just to clarify, okay. So I have a follow-up to that, I guess. So could that potentially be 10 cows per week?
I don't see myself going through three per week. A cow requires a lot of labor. A cow requires at least minimum two weeks of hanging time inside the cooler. Honestly, it'd be like one or two cows for every two, three weeks if we're talking cows.
Okay.
I personally have not worked on cows yet, so I don't know how long they take.
Okay. So one of the questions I had was when I was following through some of your numbers here, based on essentially the amount of animals that you say that you're possibly taking in. You have a two-yard dumpster.
Correct.
And in your numbers here, you're saying that, you know, essentially there'd be, you know, I think you're using a deer, or no, you say a cow with a weighing 100 pounds. So basically, I'm assuming you're using 100 pounds as a round number there. And, you know, to illustrate your math, essentially saying that, you know, that would consume 1.1% or .022 cubic yards.
The concept is that I will be, I will never run out of space. If I am running out of space, I'm calling them bi-weekly, if that makes sense.
So I did the math myself to try to check it. And so in my example, we have five cats. I understand you said slightly fewer just now, but in your paperwork here, you've had potentially more.
Sure.
So using some of the calculations you had here, we essentially can calculate a liquid and solid waste, right? So you're taking the liquid waste and putting it into the, you know, essentially your set that, or the drainage that's being created. The solid waste per cow, so you have 540 pounds, assuming it's an average-sized cow, minus 135 pounds on average of liquid waste goes to 405 pounds. You multiply that by five, if it's five cows, it's 2,025 pounds. In your calculation, you're assuming that this is going to take the dumpster as if you're like putting bags of concrete in or like bags of liquid. But you're not really accounting for the density. So if you had five cows based on a two-yard container, you would need three dumpsters to take care of that amount.
Assuming I did those five cows in one sitting, yep. So if a cow is hanging for two weeks, that's two weeks of dumpster, if that makes sense?
I'm just going on how this is written. So in here, you say one to 10 large animals potentially.
Yep.
And right now, only one person's working there with the option of adding more. So based on what you're putting here, I'm kind of running some potential large numbers based on what you put in here.
I have no interest in hiring anyone else, so I don't plan on increasing volume.
Because your language changed in that from when you first submitted it to this. So I was just looking for clarification on that.
My only comment to that would be if I have five cows per week and based on your calculations, I would accommodate the dumpster that'd be emptied daily if I'm doing that great. But I don't want that scale. I'm looking to be small scale.
So even at three, that's still over the capacity.
Again, you have to consider one cow is hanging for two weeks in the cooler. I'm not taking all that volume at once, and all that volume is going into one dumpster.
In your paperwork, you say one to 10 per week. So that's why I'm repeating this.
Okay.
Just to that concern and issue, certainly a condition of approval can be a limitation on the number of, I'll say, large animals specifically to help accommodate and deal with the dumpster proposal as a potential consideration and to clarify.
I just had a question because along the same lines, scenario one says assumes two to six medium large animals are being delivered by one customer. That would be inaccurate, right? This is scenario one.
Can you repeat your question, please?
Sure. The process described below assumes two to six medium to large animals are being delivered by one customer. So how do you define one customer? One customer showing up with six animals or one customer coming in six times during the week?
Well, it's all by appointment only, so one customer might have a cow and a pig. I don't know why I would take those at the same time, but. Everything is by appointment only, game, livestock.
Have you heard that from the Newton Police Department?
I have not. I asked Dennis to reach out.
They, kind of based on your application, the discharge, or you're seeking discharge by pneumatic bolt only. So a home-based business, or the use of firearms by a home-based business is a kind of a unique area. I don't think the police have been asked that. I'm not going to speak on their behalf, but it's, without getting into legal requirements of the laws around discharge of firearms on personal property, not having them included as part of the home-based business is a pretty clear distinction for the planning board.
Is a what?
It's a clear distinction that the planning board can make that you can, outside of a home-based business, you can do, assuming it's legal, discharge a firearm all you want on your own property. To allow it as part of a home-based business operation is something that is of the purview of the planning board.
No, I think he was going to bring it to the police and ask them for special use type thing.
I am seeking the permission from the Newton Police to use a firearm.
With a suppressor or something?
So they do not make suppressors for the pneumatic. However, I would suggest that if this is being considered for approval, you do both conditions until we hear from the chief. So one with firearms, one with pneatics, and then I am upheld to honor whatever the chief says.
They have suppressors for the pneumatic?
They do not.
So ultimately, the planning board can put conditions on an approval if they feel comfortable with whether it is including sort of the either scenario or one specifically if it's to mitigate other concerns.
Thank you. Do you guys have any other?
Yeah, I have another question too. So you've spoken to K-Town. They would be doing your dumpster pickups and drops and stuff?
Yes, and I do have emails that document that if you'd like them.
But do they already provide this service to another like company so that?
I do not know, but they did not have a problem with it.
I'm sure they'd be willing to rent a two-yard dumpster, but what I'm trying to figure out is do they have something that is product-specific for this application? So maybe the container?
They were satisfied with what they are providing with the locking lid. And I was the one who initially said bi-weekly, and they said, why don't we do weekly? That way, there's no chance for odor, and I conceded to that. I think it's pretty reasonable.
If you have problems with odor and stuff, a phone call to them and they'll come right out? Because it tends to be a, I'm just thinking out loud, dealing with dumpster companies in the past with what I've done and them showing up the same day is, did they commit to anything like that?
I'd have to check the agreement or the website, but I mean, they're a local company. I can't imagine they'd be too far out.
Yeah.
Anybody in, Mr. Gibbons? Do you have anything else, Jen?
No.
Well, I guess just for clarity, I know we've discussed it a little bit in a couple of the past meetings, and there has been some changes to try to essentially, you know, adjust things to better fit within regulations of not having a business have any operations performed outdoors or outside the dwelling of, or the structure itself. Based on what you've put here, can you talk about that a little bit more at this point? Has there been any adjustments on kind of where, you know, the culling is occurring, whether it's a large or small animal, the time that they, you know, from kind of drop-off to when it would occur? I guess walk me through that process a little bit on a small and large animal.
Sure. So both are by appointment only. If it's a smaller animal, it'll be brought in directly to the shop. If it's a larger animal, it will be called inside the trailer. And then everything else, once it's brought in as material, that's where the entire breakdown happens. There's the, there would be the internal drain. There's no more outside gantry as the original plans. There's no more holding pens. This is all taken inside now.
So if somebody shows up, and I'm just doing, maybe they wouldn't do this, and correct me if I'm wrong here, but somebody shows up with 15 chickens in a trailer. Is it just one by one? Like, how does that work?
For term's sake or industry, yes, it does matter. You do one by one. You need to guarantee your safety. You need to guarantee that they have a kind culling. And for the purposes of meat, you have to drain the blood. You can't do that fast. Takes a few minutes.
So let's say there's, you know, 15 to 20 chickens. About how long do you think it would take for that trailer to leave your driveway?
15 minutes, 20 minutes. I can't say exactly, but chickens are pretty quick.
All right, just trying to get a picture of the timing on that.
Remind me of one question that I did have. Is it infeasible to dispatch the larger animals inside?
Infeasible? No, I asked that you wouldn't go that route.
Okay.
That was actually a question I had, the eight bullets or whatever number you have. Is that like a firm, is that a, lack of better words, a wish list? Or is that a all or nothing? I'm just.
I'm sorry, can you rephrase that?
The, your key points, I'm just going to pick, because it's the easiest one to discuss, like standard operating hours, Monday through Sunday, seven to four. If I said, I make a motion to say reduce from seven to eight AM, is that, would that just kill your operation or is there some?
One hour of operation, absolutely. Seven to eight?
No, no, I'm saying like, the key points you have is that if those get modified as part of this process that we're going through right now, is that detrimental to your operation that you could not operate forward? You wouldn't be interested in?
I am willing to be flexible, as I have been. I would just ask that you would honor that I have been trying to work.
Okay, that was my question. And that wasn't directly in reference to something that you haven't been flexible on.
I have a question. How would, so say it's a good-sized pig or a cow or whatever, how would, after it's dispatched through the trailer, what's the manner of moving it into your shop?
If it's a large animal, it would be, with the gantry, there is a, currently as I have it, I want to get an electric one, but I have a mechanical one. It's used hand-correct tanks forever, right? So you hook that on top of the hoof, swings right in, swings over time because I'm taking it forever. Upon approval, I'd like to invest and get an electric one, so it's in and out of the trailer within seconds.
Will that process be inside the building when you're moving the carcass out of the trailer into the building?
So the plan is that the trailer backs up to the door. Is there a few inches between the door and the trailer? Absolutely. I can't, I don't want trailers in the building because they're going to be, it's not that big a structure and it's really unnecessary.
Anybody else on the board have any other questions or comments? Okay. So at this point, I would like to open up to public comment. In the interest of time, I would prefer or request that direct abutters speak first because they generally have more of a precedent or that could be affected by this operation more than other people. And as previously mentioned, if you could please announce your name and address, that would be appreciated.
There's a hand up, yeah.
There is a hand, okay, thank you. And it dropped, but.
Do you want to just cover the two letters the board received just in summary?
Sure. We received two letters by either a direct abutters or concerned citizens. One was prepared, a quite lengthy letter by a entity out of Dover, a legal counsel about the potential project or home-based business. There was a couple bullet points in there. Should I walk through those?
I would just summarize the general tenor of the letter.
Generally against the project or the home-based business, concerns about negative impacts to the community and the neighborhood, changing the livelihood or the, what's the correct term? I'm blanking on it. The general feel and atmosphere of the neighborhood?
Characteristic.
Characteristic, thank you. And then another abutter mentioned that there was, I probably should just read this one. This one's pretty, pretty quick about, or it was a, some testimony from another butcher in another community that said that, you know, that they operate a similar type business. So, and that they don't have any issues. So that's kind of summaries. They're both posted on the website if somebody wants to read them. Does anybody on the board have any comments on that?
Nope.
Okay. Does that person on the internet have their hands still up? Doesn't look like they do.
Oh, went down.
Went down, okay. So at this time, if there's any direct abutters, I would ask, request that they go first. If not, we can have other people speak. Yes, yes, sir. Thank you. I'm sorry, you have to come up to the microphone.
Yeah, I live across the street, number 11.
And you have to, your name and address.
Tim Donovan.
Thank you.
I reside at 11 Heath Street, right across from the pipe is. I have some concerns. Now, the dumpster, they know that it's getting animal waste because that can be considered biohazard. If it's infection, it's dangerous to humans. And is that container going to be held outside or inside the premises?
Is the question of inside the building?
Yeah, because I thought everything's supposed to be inside, not, there's supposed to be no outdoor activity.
So based on the application that the applicant has prepared, the dumpster will be installed or placed outside the structure. I can't speak on whether or not the applicant has specifically stated that the container is going to contain animal waste. Sorry, this is going quite loud.
Well, what does he plan on doing with the animal waste?
Based on the application, it appears that he plans to have it disposed by K-Town.
Yeah, and they're aware that it is, that it is animal waste?
I would have to have the applicant come up and speak to that.
Because what if they don't, what if they don't pick it up? Now it's just going to sit there and rot. I'm worried about smell, wild animals. You're going to attract that. So that's one of my concerns.
Okay.
The other one is he's already been doing this service before it's even applied by the town. I came home from work October 18th, early morning of the 19th, after working a 24-hour shift. And they, he was, Jordan was out there cutting chickens' heads off, draining blood by the trees all morning. I worked a 24-hour shift. I couldn't sleep because my dogs were going ape crap to go outside, and he was blatantly doing this out in the open. I saw a white vehicle come in, unknown male with three roosters or hands, whatever they were. And his wife, Marissa, picked them up, walked around the thing, and they slaughtered them, then they cleaned it up with water.
So I can't speak to that. If there's a code enforcement issue, I would recommend speaking to the code enforcement. I don't know if it was an agricultural use, which the planning board doesn't have anything to do with. I'm not saying.
Well, I'm just saying, if he's supposed to not do it in public, he just did it before. What's going to stop him from not to?
So I just want to be clear, there's a couple of things that there could have been a code enforcement issue. I can't speak to that one way or the other. You are allowed to slaughter animals that are your own animals on-site under agricultural practices. That is not what the application is for this evening. They are two distinct things, personal and the business that is proposed.
Yeah, I mean, if he's going to do it, do it right. That's, I mean, you're this blatantly, you just did it from someone else, but, you know, you got all kinds, we're in a residential neighborhood, not a farming neighborhood. It's residential. You need 20 acres to be a farm. He's got 2.8 acres, he's 18.2 shy of being a farm. And I don't need any more wildlife in my backyard. I have dogs. And other people have animals around there too. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other direct abutters? If not, I'll just open it up to anybody else.
He had another hand up on the screen.
No, sorry, go ahead. We're just, there's somebody on Zoom. We do see you. So if you want to, wait a second, we'll grab you next.
Good evening, Board. My name is Dean Brown. My wife and I both live on Heath Street. Been there 15 years. I personally don't have a problem with what Jordan plans on doing on his property. I'm sure the person that he is will follow code. That's pretty much it.
What number Heath Street are you?
65. I go by his house every day.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And the dogs do bark. I mean, I drive by there and they bark. Thank you.
Thank you. And is it Allison Brian? Sorry, I can't.
Brian, yeah.
Quite read it on Zoom. I will turn your mic on in a second. Oh.
Oh. You're here in the back.
Ted, can you flip that audio out front by chance? Ted, can you flip that audio out front by chance? Maybe not.
I believe she's re-logging.
Okay. We'll come back to her. Is there anybody else?
So my name is Kirsten Allen. I represent, um, Dr. James Summers, who is at 41 Heath Street. Um, I submitted the letter that you referenced. So, um, you, I think you stated that it was talking about the general character of the neighborhood, which is a concern of my client, but it was not really what the letter was intended to speak to. So, um, our position really is that the application has to be denied because, um, the proposed business necessarily relies on outdoor activities. And so that's one of the primary issues. And so the application as submitted, um, and the proposed business plan are sort of contrary, so it's really difficult to object to because it's not clear what the proposed use is. And I understand that the board can approve with conditional, um, have a conditional approval or conditions of approval, but it's not really clear what the proposed business plan is here. And I mean, I think the board spoke to that today. It's, is it zero to 10 large animals? Is it zero to 100 large animals? It's really unclear. And in the application as submitted, it's this outdoor activity of the pen and all of those activities there. And in the proposed business plan, the clear outdoor activity is the culling of the animals in this trailer. And the culling of the animals will occur outside of the dwelling in that trailer. And subsequently, there's going to be this conveying of these animals from the trailer into the barn. Um, and otherwise, there's going to be this further structure that's outside of the barn. That's the required, um, uh, underground tank and leach field. So that's something else that we have an issue with, which is this structure, um, which is defined as a structure in the ordinances, that has to be created. And I think that that's our issue, our second issue, which this business really isn't incidental to the dwelling. And that's both in size and scope. So, um, we took a look at the, um, the residential dwelling, um, uh, on the tax card, and I think we pointed this out in the letter. Um, it's some 3,000 feet and 25% of that in the, including the barn and the, when you add the tank and what the leach field will be, that will exceed 25% of the square footage. So for that reason as well, the, um, proposed use will exceed 25% of the dwelling. And when you consider the open hours, um, as well, I think that this business really does exceed the residential use of this property. So I also go through, and I know you have it, I don't want to redo everything that's in the letter, all the other reasons that this business is prohibited under Newton zoning ordinances. And that includes, as mentioned by another abutter, the etiologic materials that are improperly stored on-site. And that includes the raw carcasses and raw meat that are going to be stored and potentially only picked up, um, once a week. Perhaps it can be, um, fixed with the conditional, um, condition of use, but the other things really can't be remedied that way. So I, I'm just going to leave all of those things on the paper which has been submitted. Um, and, and I, I'll rest there, but I do want to point, um, the board to the submitted papers. But otherwise, I just think that, um, this doesn't meet the definition of the home use because of the necessary outdoor activity as well as this use exceeding, uh, not being incidental to the dwelling. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Brian with that.
Okay, um, thank you. Allison, if you would like to, we'll try speaking again. I apologize for that. You're muted though, but I'm not sure if that's...
Nope, David. We lost her.
No, she's in the back.
May I make a few comments in the meantime?
Um, just one second there. Okay.
It also sounds like Zoom folks might not be able to hear us.
Okay. That's unfortunate. Um... It doesn't sound like they know that they can't hear us either.
Jim, if you can type into the chat that we're having audio issues, that might help.
Okay. Ms. Brian, we appear to be having audio issues. Let me see if I turn my speaker on. Ms. Brian, would you, would you like to try to repeat that and see if it'll come over the speaker on my laptop? She doesn't appear to be able to hear us either.
It looks like your volume's off, Jim. Lower right-hand corner, audio icon with the next next to it.
Yeah, I, I have the speakers all the way up.
So being able to hear and participate via Zoom is a bonus, but it's not a requirement. This is a public meeting.
Okay, perfect. I do apologize for anybody that was remote, but, um, yeah, we will move on. Um, does anybody else in the audience have, yes, ma'am?
My name is Nancy Slomo, and we raise all our own meat. And I have to take it all the way to Conway, or, uh, Santa Barnstead, or Guilfed, you know, to have somebody in your own town would be nice. So, I mean...
In case anyone doesn't want to sit here anymore.
So we can now hear you.
Yeah.
We'll get right back to coming through my speaker.
And apologize for any, is it Slomo? You can... Sorry to cut you off. And your address, you're on Woodya, is it Woodya?
Mine's 24 Woodya Street.
Thank you.
Um, to have somebody in your own town to be able to do the process, I mean, we do our own chickens and turkeys and rabbits or whatever, but to have a large animal done, it's a little harder, you know? A large animal, you need a facility to be able to hang them for so long, and a freezer, and you have to package it and everything. Um, to do small animals, we can do that ourselves. But to have somebody closer than going all the way to Conway or Santa Barnstead is much easier. You know, to haul a animal, if you don't have a haul trailer, I mean, I do, but if you don't, it's just hard. I mean, I've been to so many, and some of them are in residential areas.
So that's a question I had. So you, you, the places that you go, can you kind of describe what, or is it, you know, close to other houses? What, what is the facility?
Some of them are just in a residential area. You know, I used to go to one in Gawnick, and he was just a residential person. And he brought the animal, they did it right in the trailer. It was like close to the barn, and he took it away.
I guess my question is, is it close to other houses or a T-ball field?
Well, I don't know if it was near a T-ball field. But, you know, there was a house not too far from there.
So what manner of dispatching the animal did they use? Was it a, an actual gun or a pneumatic tool?
They used an actual gun.
Okay. Just curious, I'm...
I mean, I, we used to do, I went to an agricultural school, and we used to use a stun gun.
Yeah.
When we did ours at the school. You know, it can be done.
Yeah.
Maybe not 10 cows in one week. If he says he can do two. You know, I mean, it takes a lot to chop it up, and then you get it back and seal it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the audience that would like to speak? Dr. Summers?
Thank you, just one quick question. I'm Dr. Dr. James Summers, 41 Heath Street. Um, I know under the contract and in this meeting, it was spoken that K-Town would be the company that would do the disposal. However, after contacting the owner and getting verification from the owner of the business K-Town in Salem, New Hampshire, they do not do this as a service. And not only so, but we actually, he'd be willing to actually sign a contract stating that they do not and will not pick up any carcasses or any type of animal waste. So if that is needed by the board, we can do it. But as far as, but is submitted in this contract, K-Town will not process this. Therefore, it is completely in error in this contract, or has it been falsified in this testimony here this evening that this is allowed, that they will allow it? That's all, thank you.
Can you speak to that, Jim?
Um, so a suggested condition of approval for anyway would be that the property owner has to enter into a contract with a waste disposal removal company that is able to facilitate his disposal, providing that contract should be a condition of any approval.
Okay.
Whether this specific K-Town maybe didn't understand what was being asked, I, I can't speak to that, but I do think having a signed, executed contract with a waste removal company would be a very reasonable condition to add on to any approval, if we get to that point.
Okay.
Specifically mentioning livestock, right, or animal carcasses.
Okay. Thank you. Any...
Hi, Kelsey Davidson, 15 Heath Street, a direct abutter to the property. Um, and also speaking to being a farmer that has large animals sent to quite a few, experienced quite a few residential butchers. Um, I guess in, um, speaking directly into waste is that we receive all of our bones back. We take organs to be able to feed a raw diet to our animals. As someone who's spending years raising these animals, I'm looking to get as much of the product back as I possibly can to utilize the animal. I've also spent a lot of time raising them and caring for them, so I'm not just sending these animals to someone that I haven't done the research on to make sure that they have a clean facility, that they're packaging cleanly, that they take great care in the product that they are giving back to these small farmers that are raising for themselves and for other families. So in that, my experience of what the, what Jordan is doing is taking the utmost care to have a very clean facility and go through the process with the animal's integrity at a high standard and also, um, learning the process of what goes into it for taking care of the animal for people's food. And I don't think that that is something that he's taking lightly in my experience of what other butchers have done, that is a very clean facility. And, um, and also, I guess, in speaking to the smell of going to many in the area of the New England area, that I've never gone to a butcher, a local butcher that's a small scale like this, and smelt rotting flesh. That would be an extremely disgusting deterrent if someone is not caring about that and would not want to be in that facility. So that being this enormous problem for the neighbors, that's not what they want on their property either, that I feel pretty confident speaking into, that as someone that would be taking animals there, I would not want to be smelling that either and never have. So I, I'm just speaking into that, that I've been there, been to these facilities in the summer in extreme heat and in other seasons, that again, I have never smelled rotting flesh. Also butchered animals myself. Out in the open isn't much more ideal to be able to have airflow and whatnot, but, um, if you've done research into animal blood, like, it's going into a tank, but it replenishes nutrients. It's not, it's also not a biohazard that we've, I think, already spoken into in previous meetings. Not, I believe it was...
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Do you currently process your livestock on your property?
Do we? As a farm, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. Um, we don't do big animals for the, we don't have a gantry. Uh, we don't have space to be able to hang them for two weeks at a time, which again, is ideal at the minimum. But our, our preferred butcher is a residential that I can see houses in every direction. And they also, they've used a pneumatic, they more primarily use a gun and practice extreme safety in that. And as someone who uses guns ourselves, I take that of the utmost importance to be able to dispense of the animal in the most humane manner. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Christine Summers. I live at 41 Heath Street. To say that there is a disposal plan is ridiculous. I could tell you, I personally have called WM, I've called Mellow, Corcella, Tom Borello and Sons, Dumpster Rentals Depot, State Line, Now Rush, I have called K-Town specifically even as of this past Friday. Now, if you're telling me that you have a contract for a dumpster, I ask you, did you specifically tell them that you're putting carcasses in the dumpster? Because when I call them and ask them, do you specifically rent a dumpster for the sole purpose of picking up carcasses? They tell me no. Every single one of these companies, and I even have more on the list. In addition, I even believe under New Hampshire state law that even a pneumatic gun that can be converted is even considered a firearm.
Thank you. Do we have any, I'm going to pause you for just one second. Is there any other abutters that would like to speak? Miss Piper?
Can I say my name and address too? Okay. Marissa Piper, 14 Heath Street. Um, just to speak to the K-Town situation. We do have email proof of the conversation explaining what we were going to put in the dumpster, and they agreed, and we have a contract. So we are not being fraudulent here, we're not lying about anything. We can show you the emails, although I really don't believe it's relevant or necessarily anyone's business. We have the signed contract. We have a signed contract, which we have provided. And if you'd like to add it as a condition, that we have a signed contract, and if you'd like to see the emails, I think that the board would be more than allowed to see that. Thank you.
To, one point and then one question for Jen. The point is, I understand trying to get an exact science on the number of animals, large and small, this is a theoretical business, it doesn't exist. So I'm working with parameters, there's labor time, there's cooling time. So I can't give you an exact figure. But what we've provided is a general clue to what you can understand this business is. A question for Jen. Part of the, applying for this business, we need a waste disposal program, correct?
Correct.
In that being necessary... I'm trying to understand, can I be denied because I have a dumpster even though I'm required to have one?
The aspect that the board will need to consider is whether what you are proposing meets the spirit and intent of the ordinance. And I understand I'm being a little vague to your question. But they need to consider whether the necessity of the dumpster, which is your question, meets the spirit and intent of the proposal, which is to, I will say, largely have every aspect be done inside. But there are, there is the waste management aspect of it and the trailers that I think are really the question for the board to consider.
Because they did have a company who was another tier that would, they provided medical grade barrels. They're like fifty-five gallon drums and then, but like... I guess my great, my question is, if the... Is the board flexible with those requirements as long as it meets the requirement?
They have to have the confidence that they have met the spirit and intent of the ordinance, which does not have a large amount of wiggle room within it.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up question to your statement? Can waste be stored inside the building?
It could. I don't want it to. I, I don't know, like, for example, if it's a dumpster, the trucks can't drive into the building. If that makes sense?
No, that, that, I was, I didn't know if there was a wheeled dumpster. I, I, a possibility of relocating the waste inside the building.
It's not ideal.
I'm trying to balance.
Well, they do have two yard containers that are, are on wheels.
Yeah, they're almost all on wheels, but...
To be able to roll it in and then you can roll it out with the truck to pick it up.
So, done it. So just one, the board can't, while they can put conditions on an approval, they, they can't design your proposal for you. So if that's something that you would like to state that you're accept, that's acceptable to do the dump or the waste being stored inside, I would state that so they can make that as part of their determination. And if it's not something you can consider, then don't.
I could consider that, but what if, like, I can't modify someone else's dumpster? Like if I put on a cart, is that considered a modification that, you see what I'm saying? Like if, if they have a dumpster that doesn't have wheels, like it's not my dumpster?
I think if you're committed to storing the waste inside, you can state that.
Okay.
As far as the logistics of the containers and the dumpster, I think that's sort of outside the planning board's purview.
So any other comments from the... Yes, ma'am.
So the number of animals has now increased to about five to six large animals, one to a hundred small animals under, I think, the second scenario. So if all of these animals are being slaughtered within a trailer, are we to assume that these animals are gonna stay calm in a trailer to be slaughtered? Coming with one customer? And then where does all the blood and discharge go from the trailer? Where is that going?
Actually, Mr. Jordan should.
The applicant should.
She can certainly speak to that.
Um, the question was, number of animals in a trailer. Okay, so the trailers that are coming are, they're not gonna fit two to six large animals and chickens all at the same time. That's all over weeks' periods. If I was kind, I would wash out the trailer for them. But if that's something that the board says, no outside operations, then, then the owner would have to take care of it.
Can I just ask what I think might be a clarifying question to what Bowman was asking? If you have, I'm gonna say, two cows come in on a trailer or two goats, would dispatching the animal, one animal in the trailer then cause panic and hardship on a secondary or tertiary animal?
Usually, I can't predict every scenario. But animals aren't afraid necessarily of dying. They're afraid of being alone and removed from where they are. Does that make sense? You're, they're more afraid of being taken away from their group than they are of actually dying, if that makes sense?
I guess my question's more of the noise.
Noise?
Well, when you dispatch one animal.
Yep.
The noise causing panic with the other animal.
Okay, so I guess it depends on the animal. For poultry, it's, there is no noise, there's no captive bolt, there's no, there's no firearms. For goat and lamb, that might be more captive bolt or a knife. So we're talking, then at that point, we're talking pigs, cows. They might react if, hey, my buddy's down.
So I, I guess my second part to get to what she was getting at. Based on the type of slaughter, how much blood from the initial culling, if it's taking place in the trailer, would you expect?
Not much, it's really after the fact.
Which would, based on what you presented, would take place fully within the barn?
Correct.
Can I ask another question? Do you have to dispatch animals on site?
It gets hairy there because there are certain legalities on that. Wild game? No, obviously. But I don't know if an animal's healthy, in good conscience and for proper business measure. If somebody has a sick animal, I can't return that sick animal to them as meat.
Okay, so to, basically you do not want to receive an animal that was sick to then process and have the meat spoil or be rancid, like, right when you open it up?
Yeah, or a risk of suit.
Or a foodborne illness. Okay. That is one of your reasons why you would prefer to dispatch on site? Thank you for that, that was something I personally never thought of. Sure, go ahead.
I have just a question for clarification. Thank you, just a question for clarification. I know the last couple of meetings I've been here, I was told when I brought up the different EPA, things that environmental hazards like that, it said it wasn't pertinent to this because this is an application for a home-based business, right? That's correct. So when I was told that, in the, if I'm not mistaken, if I look at the town ordinance correctly, how many home-based businesses a person allowed to have according to the town ordinance of Newton? Does it say one?
So the town, under the zoning ordinance, is only, only one home-based business can occur at each residence. There are ways that you may have a business address at a residence that does not necessitate a home-based business, that is plausible. It is also possible someone could have more than one home-based business, but the town has never been alerted to such. So only one home-based business can be approved by the planning board. Anything else would be a code enforcement issue.
Okay, code enforcement issue. So if a town was alerted, they have four home-based businesses, counting this one, in this location? And that would be a notification to the town to do so?
No, that would be information provided to the town, going to the code enforcement officer to question. That would be the proper course of action. To my knowledge, and Jim can correct me with the town records, there has been no other home-based business approved at this property. A condition of approval would certainly be that no additional home-based businesses can be approved at this site.
Okay, so even if there's registered with the Secretary of State, with the state of New Hampshire as businesses at that residence, at that address, with the business, separate business IDs for each one, it would still be considered a non-home business?
There are other legal mechanisms that you could use the mailing address for a business. Whether the business is operating out of the home would be a different matter.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Do we have any other comments from the public? Sorry, Jen.
So if the board would like, I have drafted what I think may be some potential findings of facts and potential conditions of approval based on the application, the questions, previous comments. Some of them certainly have numbers associated with them that you should discuss, whether you think something qualifies or not. Happy to read those out if you'd like.
Can you, just for the public's information, explain the finding of facts?
Sure. Under New Hampshire state law, before a planning board can make any decision on any application, they have to do two basic things. And one of them is present their findings of facts. Basically, what are the reasons they would approve or disapprove an application? What, what's the justification? What are the things they can point to? Conditions of approval are things that if Mr. Piper is successful, would have to adhere to as part of his approval through the board. Some of them might be things like a contract with a waste disposal company being provided. That would be things that could occur after tonight's meeting. Other things would go on forever, like hours of operation.
You wanna go down your list, Jen?
Sure, I, I do warn you, it's a little bit long, so I'll try to go slower.
Yeah.
So the following findings of facts, this is zoning ordinance twelve B, one through four. The home-based business as presented is accessory to the residential use and does not change the character of the established neighborhood. The board might want to elaborate on the characteristics of the surrounding neighborhood as that's a very important thing with home-based business. The proposed use does not utilize more than twenty-five percent of the total floor area of the dwelling, including all floors and accessory structures. Number three, the proposed business activity as presented will not occur outdoors. The proposed dispatching of animals inside an enclosed mobile trailer, and I have within thirty minutes upon arrival, meets the spirit and intent of the ordinance of all operations occurring indoors. So that one is indicated that when the trailer comes up, that they would have a certain amount of time to dispatch the animal from when it would then need to be brought inside. So that was the reasoning, or reasoning for that suggestion. Number four, as proposed, the home-based business will not be serviced by heavy commercial trucks that would be out of character with the neighborhood or have adverse impact on the neighborhood. Number five, the home-based business meets the criteria set forth in zoning ordinance twelve for a home-based business in the town of Newton as presented and with the conditions set forth by the planning board. Are you ready for me to read the suggested conditions?
Yeah.
Okay. One, the home-based business shall only allow for animals to be brought to the property for processing by appointment only between the hours of seven AM and four PM. The delivery of animals shall be limited to no more than, I have in parentheses, four deliveries per day that require trailers. That's important in part to limit number of animals and in part to limit traffic trailer, or traffic to the site. Number three, the limit of up to, I have in place, four large domestic animals per week. That certainly could be adjusted as needed. Number four, livestock brought to the property that require dispatching inside an enclosed mobile trailer shall only be allowed by appointment between the hours of nine AM and three PM, Monday through Saturday. The dispatching of any animal inside an enclosed mobile trailer shall occur within thirty minutes of arrival at the property. Number five, only a pneumatic captive bolt stunner or other non-noise-producing method may be, may be used to dispatch animals. Firearms may not be used for dispatching purposes. Number six, all solid waste from the business must be put into a dumpster located on the property. The dumpster shall be located at the back of the accessory structure where the business is proposed. The dumpster shall be of a design that is leak-proof, fully closing and kept loft until waste is, unless waste is being put in or removed. Number seven, the property owner must enter into a contract with the solid waste disposal company that will include removal of all waste at least weekly and more frequently should odor be detected. Number eight, all liquid waste shall be disposed of through a tank system as proposed that is in conformance with all applicable local, state, and federal laws, including but not limited to New Hampshire Department of Agriculture, Market, and Foods and New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. The tank shall be serviced and emptied should it reach a seventy-five percent of its holding capacity. Number nine, the signage for the business may be a maximum size of two square feet. Number ten, no more than two commercial vehicles may be kept overnight on the premises. Number eleven, no outside storage operations or display of materials shall be allowed. Number twelve, only the residents of the property may conduct the business with no more than two non-resident employees. Plus your general standard of conditions, that all life safety things be met and all state, local, state, and federal laws be adhered to. I can reread any of them.
Can you put that on the screen?
What?
Can you put it on the screen, by chance?
I can, there are definitely some typos within here. That will take me a minute.
Can I talk while you're on that? I have enough to write them all down.
Oh, all right.
A stunner is noise-producing, so...
So that, I had only a pneumatic captive bolt stunner or other non-noise-producing method may be used in the dispatch of animals. So a pneumatic bolt pistol would still be able to be used, but...
But that is noise.
But other methods that don't produce noise can also be used for chickens and smaller animals.
Okay. Thank you.
So with that being said, I'm gonna make a motion to approve Mr. Piper's application. Jordan and Marissa's, Piper's request for their home-based business based on everything that we had just outlined.
Can, can I just recommend, you might wanna confirm with Mr. Piper that some of the numbers that I suggested will still work or not work for him? Just so you know that.
I, I also have a couple tweaks that I would think. I guess I'll, are any of those like...
He do have a motion that was made, so...
Can you withdraw your motion?
We'll withdraw it for now.
Thank you.
You have a question?
At first pass, realizing you just heard a bunch of conditions, are any of those... Cause I was going to massage that a little bit.
It's, it's workable. Not excited about the no firearm, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna fight it. I recognize the park's right there, so it's, it's an honest...
Can you find what the number of animals that we stated?
Could we restate that?
Sure, so it would, that deliveries of animals shall be limited no more than four deliveries per day that require trailers. It all has to be by appointment and that the limit of up to, I suggested four domestic animals. I'm sorry, four domestic animals. animals, I'm sorry, four large domestic animals per week.
Define domestic or large?
I'll give you that that is difficult, which is why I originally had put animals requiring trailers. The board could certainly specify the type of animals, cows, pigs, goats.
Okay.
Jim? I was just gonna say, um, most medium-sized animals are under 150 pounds. Anything, when you get into a cattle, what have you, you're talking over 150 pounds. So you may want to specify the weight of a large animal. For large animals exceeding 150 pounds each.
Okay.
There's a big range there, though. You could have a 200-pound animal or a thousand-pound.
You gotta talk louder, Andrew, I can barely hear you.
Oh, so I was just saying that, there's a big range there. I mean, still, it's, it's, it could still be the difference between 200 and 1,000 pounds.
Simply from having lived actually not far from where Mr. Piper was, and we got a calf every year that we raised for slaughter, those were usually in the 150 to 160-pound rate, and that was a wean. That one had just been weaned. So, a farmer is not going to be bringing in young, young cattle. They're going to bring, bringing in something in excess. And you could make it 100 pounds, because goats and sheep rarely go over 100 pounds. Pigs, oh, you'd get...
My attempt was to distinguish between animals that would require a trailer and animals that could be brought in, say, just in the back of a pickup truck, generally being smaller animals, that's why I've limbed on the number of trailers, but...
And totally understanding the rationale of dispatching on-site, but trying to find a, I'll say, middle ground, would your operation not be able to, would you not be able to operate if you could not dispatch animals outside, or in a trailer, I'll say? Like, I'm assuming it's a pain, but you can cone chickens inside the building.
Can you ask your question again?
Do you need to have the ability to dispatch animals in a trailer?
Yes.
Okay.
Large animals.
I wasn't making that distinction, because I was gonna leave it up to you, but, um... So you need the ability to dispatch in a trailer? Okay.
Let me just comment on why. If they're in the trailer, they've been brought in, they're in a contained space, to say that they can only be processed inside opens a can of worms? How do we get them there? It's not that big a space.
To transport a live animal, you're saying? I, I understand the reasoning behind it, having farm animals, it's, yeah. Okay.
Is everybody good? You good?
I think we need to clarify the, the numbers.
Yeah, I'm still kind of going through some of these conditions in my head of specifically...
Because if I have two bucks in one week, and then I take a cow, all of a sudden, I might be overweight, if that makes sense, if we're going by pounds.
Well, deer are considered medium game, not large.
I would say, I would say I said four large domestic animals.
Okay.
Right.
There's a clarification between livestock and wild game in our conditions.
I'm happy with lowering to two trailer loads, I think the number was per day, it was four per day, right?
I, no more than four deliveries.
Two is plenty, that's plenty for me to work with.
All right, so we'll adjust it to two trailers a day.
I'm not a, I'm not a huge facility.
And large animals will be as stated, such as a cow or such magnitude.
Do, do you anticipate, like, breaking a cow down is a couple days, like, by the time you process it all, hang it, vacuum seal it, wash everything? I mean, that's a decent amount of work.
Sure is.
Do you actually anticipate having somebody bring you two cows and you having the capacity to actually deal with that? Or even like, a couple pigs is, like, a couple days?
Yeah, no. I, I, I can't do them back-to-back. I, I don't, I'm not set up for that, nor do I want to be.
Okay. I'm trying to box this down even small.
Right. Well, that was per week, she said, right, Jim?
Yeah, I said a limit of up to four large...
Yeah, it's not per day, so that's per, per week.
Oh, trailers per week.
I said, yeah.
Four, four per week is fine.
Yeah.
So, just to read through all, deliveries of animals shall be limited to no more than two deliveries per day that require trailers, and limit of up to four large domestic animals per week. We can define what large is, cows, pigs, if you want to, but that's what it currently says.
Right. So define large as cows.
Well, pigs can get large, too.
Yeah, they're like 40, 40 pounds, yeah.
Yeah, like, four, five, six hundred pounds, depending on what you're raising.
But you said you, two of those a day, you wouldn't be able to handle anyway, right?
Two cows?
Yeah. But isn't that what...
Did that, my question's like, do you need the ability to even accept two cows per week?
No, no, no.
Okay. My, then this is for board, not the applicant. My thought is to make this a medium between balancing the applicant's rights and the characteristics of the neighborhood of other agricultural activities that may be happening. Nobody else in town is processing cows or pigs more than what they're doing on their own house property. Understanding, like, there's an efficiency for, like, chickens, when it's chicken processing day, you're going at it all day. You don't do that with pigs, because you just don't have the capacity, or at least, I personally never have. Just something for us to consider for conditions. My personal preference was to reduce that even more for large animals, so that it is not a, he still has the ability to do processing some livestock, but it doesn't negatively, potentially negatively impact the neighborhood of additional vehicles coming in, cattle, et cetera, pigs, trying to balance things out a little bit, but happy to talk about it. I'm not sure if anybody else here has something to say, or Jim?
Mr. Moran, you could set it at two, and if Mr. Piper discovered that it goes a lot faster than he's expecting, he could actually come in for, and request a modification.
Yep, that, that is, for any condition set, if you want to change your operate, your hours, anything could be, it would be a new application and everything, but trying to balance that out.
So you want to reduce to four?
I think it would be better, given that he's probably not going to be able to process four in a week.
Yeah, but over the course of a week, because he's gonna do it and then hang it. I would, I would feel comfortable lowering it to three, to give the opportunity, not that he'd be doing it right away, but over time, before, that way they wouldn't have to come to the board immediately, once he starts to master it.
So, what's for discussion right now is three large animals per week?
Yeah.
Large animals being cows only?
No, being of subsequent size as a cow.
A cow takes a long time, but if I accept a pig on Tuesday, hang it, a pig on Wednesday, hang it, I could have the potential to be missing out on business on Thursday, Friday, because I'm capped.
For a lot, yes, for larger animals, I, I get that, and, you know, this type of year, it's a little bit busier, given...
Because August through October, November is pig season. So if a farmer has six pigs, that farmer's coming back two, three times, just to deliver?
Okay.
So then the four would be shorter?
I'm sorry?
The four would be shorter, four pigs a week?
Yes.
The full ideal was a week?
Yeah.
Or keep it at that, right?
And another thing I brought up earlier was storage of the waste inside the building, understanding it's, again, not ideal, but it's the moving a activity that's connected outdoors that is directly related to a home-based business indoors.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's why I listened about the fuzzy line there, because it's required. So what happens if I'm contracted, they deliver the dumpster, and they say, can't get it inside?
You have to find a different waste company.
I would ask that it would not be inside.
Well, how about a fenced-in area?
I apologize, yeah, you would have to come up and say that, but a comment in the audience was made about fencing in the dumpster and a closure of some sort, I'm assuming.
Yeah, some kind of a fenced-in area, I've been to a couple of places that they have a, you know, a solid fenced-in area. You know, I mean, the fence is like that tall, so it covers the dumpster a little.
I, yeah, so generally, or is the audience has written, and you can quote me or help me, Jim, it's, that operations must be conducted inside a structure?
Correct, I mean...
Is it the word operations, or is it...
It says the business.
The business, okay.
So, I mean, a possibility is putting a, effectively a shed that could be attached to a building as fully enclosed and having a roof. That is a possibility.
Can we make that be?
You could, you could make it a condition, I think it's, the placement of it, you'd want to be shown, or at least well-described, if that's the condition.
I have one suggestion, too, is that, like, a baggage car, carts that they use at the airport, something like that, you can put the dumpster on, and you can pull it in and out, when they, when they come in to pick it up with a truck or something like that, if that's feasible.
It's, it's, yes, but no, because that's where the drain is, that's where the work's happening, so every day, pulling it out, then, I mean, violation, because now the dumpster's outside, but I have to pull it out to, does that make sense?
Hmm, that's where the drain is.
Right, the drain, okay.
Bear with me on the wording of this, but is not there precedence with other home-based businesses in Newton that also have dumpsters for their home businesses, and you're just concerned about what's going in it? Most businesses do have a dumpster that are...
She's gonna speak to...
Yeah, so, to my knowledge, there are no dumpsters associated with any home-based, home-based business in Newton. There are certainly businesses in Newton that have a dumpster, however, and the precedence isn't really at play here, because every application is different.
Gotcha. I mean, I can tell you that there are home-based businesses in Newton that have...
No question of that.
Thanks.
Yes?
So, there was a comment that the home-based business needs to be conducted entirely within a structure, and that's not what it said, what the zoning ordinance says, it needs to be conducted entirely within a dwelling or accessory building, which is incidental to the dwelling. So I don't think it just needs to be within any structure. I think that, in this case, the proposed home-based business is supposed to be within the accessory dwelling unit, which is the barn. And so I don't think that, like, okay, we can put, we can do some of this business in this structure, and some in this structure, we can just erect structures to do the business in, and it needs to be, in this case, in the barn, which is where the proposed business is supposed to be conducted. And then the zoning ordinance also prohibits outdoor activities. There shall be no outdoor activity or use, there shall be no outside operations, storage or display of materials or goods. So I think that the storage of garbage in a dumpster is certainly prohibited in the zoning ordinance.
But, to your point, the storage of waste in a structure that is part of a business would be allowed?
Oh, absolutely. I'm just talking about the storage of waste in a dumpster, and, you know, putting a fence around it is not, not appropriate.
Yes, Jim?
I was just gonna say...
Sorry, I, I was just letting, I did see you, but...
Oh, I was just gonna say regarding dumpsters, every home-based business that is part of the boilerplate is that they have to supply their own waste management plan, and they are not allowed to take anything to the Newton transfer station.
And most of the things that the planning board has seen, has seen since I've been here, I don't know, on the board for a while, it's, we don't generate any waste, is most people. Did you still want to come up? Sorry.
I had one comment after.
I'm kind of curious about this leaching system, because last I knew, under town ordinance, it said the leaching system is considered a structure. And in order to have a home-based business, it's supposed to be an accessory, and a structure is not considered an accessory, it's permanent to the land. That's in the town ordinance. So how does this comply, even having the leaching system with the home-based business?
Do you want to speak to...
So, accessory structures are those that are incidental and subordinate to the residential use. In this case, the house is the residential use, but things like, on a typical single-family home, a barn, a shed are considered accessory structures. A septic tank is considered a structure in Newton, but it is not, it can be accessory to the residential use, but a septic tank is not accessory to the residential use. This tank is proposed is accessory to the business, because it's required for the business to even function. It's not required for the residential use to function on the property.
Has the board considered the square footage problems that that leaching system tank has, has brought in terms of...
Are you referring to the tank or the leaching system?
Both. So, leach fields are not considered structures in Newton, but the tank is considered a structure, however.
So the way that I, I read that, and it would include both of it, it does say part of what a leaching field would be, but in, in any event, I think that there, it does exceed the 25% when you include the tank. And, and we don't know exactly what the size of this tank will be because of kind of the stage of this plan, but I do think that this exceeds the 25%.
So going with the straight size of the residence with the accessory structure, the rule is 25%, the accessory structure is below that 25%.
Before or after the, the tank?
The way it reads is as existing. At, the way it reads is as existing. The tank, the addition of the tank does not factor into the equation based on my reading of it.
Your reading of the application or your?
The reading of the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
I would disagree with that reading of the zoning order.
We are not currently on trial, this is really for the board, I'm advisory only.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Christine Summers, forty-one Heath Street. I'm trying to understand, so are you telling me that the tank being put in is considered an accessory?
I'm saying that the tank can, can't be under Newton zoning considered a structure.
Because I, am I understand that clearly, that it would be considered a structure being permanent to the land, correct?
Under the strict definition, yes. How it applies to the application is slightly different however.
Okay, but wouldn't that, wouldn't that, i- if it's considered a structure, it's not considered an accessory for a home-based business? I, 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 I don't even understand how, how we're here, if it, how can you consider even putting a structure in if you can only use an accessory in accordance with a home-based business?
Because you can propose to put an addition on as a part of the application, if you so choose whether the board wants to consider that in its deliberations, its interpretation is up to them.
Okay, so it is, but it is considered a structure?
Under the, the basic definition in Newton, the tank is considered a structure.
And not an accessory?
They're two different, so any, a barn, a house, a shed, a?
I, I get a barn is, I get that. But if you're putting in a second structure, how is that considered an accessory when it's a requirement of a home-based business?
Because it's incidental and subordinate to the residential use.
But it's not being used for the home?
Exactly.
The, the home is the main use of the property, the business is considered secondary, so the tank proposal is considered secondary to the residential use.
If you guys wanna gather thoughts, take a second, whatever, my question is, goes back to dumpster, but are you guys good? Okay.
I guess I. Good with what? Sorry.
There's a lot said, so I need to make sure you guys had a second, cause I'm jumping.
You good, Bob?
Yep.
Uh, my question is if you mandate or as a condition, the dumpster's inside, has that coincide with Newton's code of health? Because if it's a condition that it's inside and that it violates the health code. I don't know how that works.
I can't fully speak to the health code and whether or not a dumpster inside would be an acceptable item, that would be a question for your health officer.
I'm, I'm trying to help everybody here, like if, if that's a condition, then we're gonna be back here trying to figure it out.
I think I would probably condition it differently than inside where you're processing meat.
The dumpster?
Something along the lines of waste shall be stored inside a enclosed structure.
Okay.
So that business is conducted inside.
I see.
And how you choose to. To, how you are able to meet that condition, I don't know, but.
Okay.
I, yeah, in right, like, and you would have to follow applicable codes and regulations, so if you have to, I don't know, I don't know how you get there, but. Anybody else have anything else?
Everybody good with that?
I think I would like to change that condition about the dumpster.
Do you want me to read what I have?
Yes, please.
All solid waste from the business must be put into a dumpster located on the property and be stored in an enclosed structure. The dumpster shall be located. In the enclosed structure at the back of the accessory structure where the business is occurring, the dumpster shall be of design that it is leak-proof, fully closing and kept locked. Unless waste is being put in or being removed.
Can we say in the vicinity of? Or do we have to?
I would.
Go to the application?
I would designate a space you are comfortable, if you can describe it, then that's probably sufficient.
In the location as shown in the application?
I would describe it just because the indication of the location on.
Contain, okay.
Great, it's really, it's a little bit hard to read.
He might be able to find something else besides a dumpster, like some sort of container that he mentioned too, so. I mean, I'm not sure if it says dumpster, it doesn't have to be a dumpster, right?
Correct. An approved waste containment unit. Okay, so Bob, you had a motion.
Yep, motion for approval. Based on conditions set forth by the board as we just went through in a minute. Jen, if you were keen to read down that one more time, please?
Give me one second to just make this multiply to the four container. Okay. Do you want me to read through the findings of facts as well?
Can you start with the findings of fact?
Yep, findings of facts to zoning ordinance twelve B one through four, the home-based business as presented is accessory to the residential use. And does not change the character of the established neighborhood. The board wanna elaborate on that one?
Does anybody?
Well, simply put, we have a sta- set of stables on in the area, we have a farm in the area. We're located in New Hampshire in a rural community. And as far as I'm concerned, it meets. That those aspects.
Alright, I'll continue on then. Number two, the proposed use does not utilize more than twenty-five percent of the total floor area of the dwelling, including all floors and accessory structures. The proposed business activity as presented will not occur outdoors, the proposed dispatching of animals inside an enclosed mobile trailer within thirty minutes upon arrival of the property. Meets the spirit and intent of the ordinance of all operations occurring indoors. Four, as proposed, the home-based business will not be served by heavy commercial trucks that would be out of character with the neighborhood or have adverse impact on the neighborhood.
Can you?
Yep.
Pause there, um, do we wanna put a weight restriction because heavy is a subjective?
I don't have the, oh, that's heavy commercial truck traffic. That's one of the criteria of your zoning, that's actually verbatim.
Yep.
So you can, but it's just a general criteria.
I don't like our zoning ordinance right now.
Do you want me to continue?
Yes, please.
Number five, the home-based business meets the criteria set forth in zoning ordinance twelve for a home-based business in the town of Newton. As presented with the conditions set forth by the planning board, so these are the conditions of approval. The home-based business shall only allow for animals to be brought to the property for processing by appointment only between the hours of seven AM and four PM. Two, delivery of animals shall be limited to no more than two deliveries per day that require trailers. Three, the limit of up to four large domestic animals per week. Four, livestock brought to the property that require dispatching inside an enclosed mobile trailer shall only be allowed by appointment between the hours of nine AM and three PM, Monday through Saturday. The dispatching of any animal inside an enclosed mobile trailer shall occur within thirty minutes of arrival on the property. Number five, only a pneumatic captive bolt stunner or other non-noise-producing method may be used in the dispatching of animals. Firearms may not be used for dispatching purposes. Number six, all solid waste from the business must be put into a waste container or dumpster located on the property and stored in an enclosed structure. The dumpster or container shall be located at the back of the accessory structure where the business is proposed. The dumpster or container shall be of a design that is leak-proof, fully closing and kept locked unless waste is being put in or being removed. Number seven, the property owner must enter into a contract with a solid waste disposal company that will include removal of all waste at least weekly and more frequently should odor be detected. Number eight, all liquid waste shall be disposed of through a tank system as proposed that is in conformance with all applicable local, state and federal laws, including but not limited to New Hampshire Department of Agriculture, Markets and Foods and New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. The tank system shall be serviced and emptied should it reach a seventy-five percent of its holding capacity. Number nine, signage for the business may be a maximum of size of two square feet. Number ten, no more than two commercial vehicles may be kept overnight on the premises. Number eleven, no outside storage operations or display of material shall be allowed. Number twelve, only the residents of the property may be conduct, may conduct the business with no more than two non-residential employees. And then if Jim can do the standard additional conditions.
Can we add one more?
Yep, certainly can.
Um, no washing of equipment. On the exterior of the premises or outside the building?
How about no washing of equipment outside?
That works, perfect.
Define equipment?
I was specifically referring to trailers, yes.
Would be like the trailers and whatever else?
So. Okay.
What was the one about having trucks on the property overnight?
Um, one of your criteria under the home-based business is that you can't have more than two commercial, um, vehicles parked overnight on a property. That's just the standard.
And that's the, the twenty-five or twenty-six thousand?
Twenty-six thousand.
Yep. With a hand.
One question for something that you would.
So we're in the middle of something right now, but I'm, I'm not disregarding you, I'm sorry. Okay, so there's a motion sitting there.
So your standard conditions would be that all applicable local, state and federal permits are obtained, um, and that all health, safety codes.
Life safety codes.
Life safety codes are met, sorry.
Okay, um. Can we still take, I mean, we haven't closed it. Can we have the motion sit there for a minute?
I would recommend that the board either continue with your deliberation, um, I mean, if it's just a procedural question.
So we should second it first for discussion?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Mr. Papakrisas. Seconded it, okay.
Wanna ask for some procedural questions?
Sure, if you wanna come up, um, and I apologize, I forget your name.
Mary.
Thank you.
Uh, Mary, from about twelve P Street, wondering on the times if we can not do Saturdays? Can we do like Monday through Friday?
So the way it reads right now is seven AM to four PM, it doesn't specify a day of the week, but for the, but for the deliveries of, um, trailers, it has to be between nine AM and three PM, Monday through Saturday.
I'm saying is in terms of culling them in the trailer, can we not do that on Saturdays?
That is up to the board and the motion would need to be amended.
That's my allegation.
I'm the neighbor that lives across the street farm, and if you guys are saying that he, he has to store the container behind his structure, I'll be looking that, at that container. So if this does get approved, I want it to look nice. I don't wanna be looking at a dumpster or anything, cause he's gonna be doing, his house is here and I think we have proposed to do your cutting is looking towards your house, correct? And the back of his garu- his garage is, is in the view from my house.
Just to, my intent is in between the house and the barn in my description, that is.
So you're not gonna go from the stru- from his structure to the street?
Correct.
So it's gonna be behind his house?
Correct.
Okay, I thought it was gonna be.
That was the intent of the description.
Okay, cause if I get that correct, you're doing it in your, in your barn there, under the shed, right? Okay, thank you.
Did you wanna say something about what she asked?
I have it on there for the option. I don't intend on working Saturdays and Sundays. I really don't wanna be receiving game on Sundays, but I like to have the option, so that's why that's there.
Okay, I, I'm listening to everybody, um, given what you just said, your goal is to not work the weekends?
I want the option, but I'm happy to concede on culling for Saturdays.
That was.
Just that part?
Yeah, no culling on Saturday.
That's kinda pointless, green parks right there, it's, it's not good.
So if you guys wanna change that so that only the dispatching can be Monday through Friday, nine AM to three PM, you need to amend the motion. And whoever seconded.
I'll stay in.
I'll second it.
So no culling of animals on Saturdays and Sundays and. Do you wanna put holidays or no? I, I know holidays is a loose term, but.
I would not get into that level of detail, but.
Just go ahead.
Okay. Okay, so seven to four, culling nine to three, is that what she said?
Nine to three, Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday.
But the general hours of operation are seven AM to four PM by appointment.
Thank you.
You wanna do a real call vote?
You don't have to, you don't have anybody participating online for planning board members?
Is there any more discussion from the board? Okay. You have anything?
My only hangup is the noise, um, I mean, we specifically say no noise from a home-based business and. This does produce. Arguably quite a bit of additional noise. And I'm just wondering. Although I think we've already talked through it, if there's anything, before we vote on this, if there's anything you can think of that would help mitigate that?
The pneumatics only brings down those decibels. If we're concerned, we've just established that there's only X amount of animals I'm using that, the pneumatics on, so the gun range is gonna be a much bigger concern noise-wise than me.
Well, that's different, but okay.
But if, for, for, just, are, talking about noise. Generating noise, it just as, generally. The pneumatic gun is gonna go off once, maybe twice per day. Three times a week?
So just, this is what the ordinance says, the home occupation, home-based business must not offend by admitting smoke, dust, odor, noise, gas, fumes, lights or refuse matter. The standard is must not offend, it's not produce none. If, if that, if that makes a difference.
Okay.
As a pointer, we do have it in the app, the SOP that it's comparable to rural farm noise, I believe is the language. I'll look it up.
At this point, you have a motion and a second unless there's further discussion.
I have nothing else. Jim? Okay, Mr. Ready?
Can I explain myself?
Excuse me?
Uh, based on what I say, or is it, is this a simple? Based on what I say, or is it, is this a simple...
No, if you want to provide some commentary for about, you can.
I would say overall, you've been very accommodating as we've been going through this process. I think I want to be able to say yes to this. I just, I don't believe that the plan that's been put in front of us adequately addresses operations outside, although you've made many concessions on that. I just don't think that this type of operation can properly operate completely indoors and meet the criteria that we have. I think the noise, and as you clarified, the offense to the neighborhood, and how that, I completely understand there's farms, other animals, livestock in the area. If we're taking this by case-by-case basis, then in this particular case, I do not believe it meets the, the spirit of the other activities happening. And I think that, just generally speaking, our, the town of Newton's home-based business is intended to accommodate businesses that, as we've spelled out over the last several meetings, does not negatively impact, you know? Low footprint, very quiet, very small, home-based businesses that operate within the community. And I'm going to have to say nay, because I don't think it meets that.
Mr. Ryan?
I'm also a nay. I believe simply that it has a negative impact on the character of the neighborhood.
Aye.
Mr. Papakristas?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbons?
No.
Mr. Moran? So we have nay, 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 aye, aye. What happens if there's a tie?
If there's a tie, the motion fails.
So it fails either way?
If, if, yeah, I suppose. But if you say nay, the application, that's the decision. If you say yea, then it's a tie, so we basically start over with any motion and conditions.
And if I say, I'm here, I'm listening to arguments on either side. The application would be essentially withdrawn? Not, I guess it would...
The only other course of action could be if there was a tie vote and the motion failed.
Oh, this is only on the motion, so we could change the motion?
Yeah, you can change the motion.
Thank you for the clarification. I will say aye on that, and see if we can come to something that's a little bit more contained to address Mr. Eddy's comments and some of Mr. Ryan's comments, Mr. Gibbons. You didn't provide any feedback, so nothing against you personally.
No, that's okay.
So, so with that vote, the motion fails?
Thank you.
I can clarify that if you'd like. It's basically that it's still not all totally enclosed in the building, in the structure. We still have the culling in the trailer and the removal from the trailer to the barn, so...
Okay, so it's specifically inside operation, or outside operations? Does that address some of, I think it addressed some of...
Yeah, I mean, that addresses a large portion of my concern.
Let me remind you also, though, that home-based businesses do receive packages from UPS and other delivery services, from vehicles pulling up at all different hours of the day, sometimes even at night. When I leave at four o'clock in the morning, I have packages that have been put on my doorstep. So that type of, those type of deliveries take place. So for home-based businesses, and those are taking place outdoors, and having things dropped off. And as far as the noise goes, country pond fishing game during the day, and I live all the way up here in Highland Ave, I hear that clear as day all day long with the people down there practicing. So the minimal noise that would come from his compared to what takes place down there is...
Part of it is not just the noise, though.
Do we have a discussion in here? Just to clarify, the board is deliberating, they're discussing whether they will do a different or amended motion.
I don't feel like it's just a noise issue. I think the morbidity behind the noise is going to be a detriment to kids outside the ad playing. There's people playing baseball over the park, they're going to hear it. That was one of the things I had written here.
I am personally not concerned about noise, but, or sound. My larger concern is operation in the trailer. And if there is a way to move this forward, understanding that the ideal scenario for livestock is to dispatch them on-site, that's where it's a sticking point, yes?
I have a few modifications to the previous motion I can offer you if that's...
Can you only summarize the ones that you're trying to modify?
Yep, so the proposed business activity as presented will not occur outdoors. Then removes the dispatching in trailers component. And then the condition of approvals, there are two that would be modified. That livestock brought to the property that requires dispatching will occur inside and be allowed by appointment only. The same rest of it would be, and then all, nope, sorry, it was just those two.
So the change would be dispatching inside?
Correct.
And then, so it'd be transporting of the animal from a vehicle, whatever you want to call it, into the building? And then if it's, they need to dispatch it on-site, that's fine. If you don't, if it arrived dispatched, that's also fine. It's just transporting of goods.
So this just removes that any dispatching could take place in a mobile trailer? That's the only modification that I...
Can the board decide, can the board define outdoors?
Not in a structure?
I think you may want to specify that the dispatching would have to occur inside the accessory structure, the barn. So the one other option is the board, if you need to think on this more, you could continue this. You still are well within the sixty-five days. The next meeting, it would be sort of the last one within that sixty-five days. But I don't know what other information would be presented unless Mr. Jordan wants to modify his application.
Or, I don't have input at this point, right?
That's up to...
Then you can, yeah.
I am not trying to be offensive, which is why the culling takes place from nine to three. The majority of people aren't around, speaking to that concern. I don't know how to muffle sound, other than sound barriers and, as, the farther away you are from an emission of noise, the quieter it becomes, if that makes sense?
Doppler effect, I get it.
I'm sorry?
Doppler effect and things, yes.
I personally don't want to see this go to another night, so I will concede to culling being inside, but you're going to have to work with me on things like shoots. There's a concern now for animals getting loose, that wasn't an issue before. That might be something...
I think that's generally part of the problem, though, is, is the fact that there's so many of these concessions having to take place, is it, is it kind of speaks to the fact that the property's not quite appropriate for this kind of activity.
And the concessions are me trying to honor everyone in this room and whoever isn't in the room.
And I get it, and we do appreciate it. It's, I'm trying to work with you, and I'm trying to get to where I need to be. It's very, it's just difficult with the given plan. And the noise is secondary. I mean, really, it's, it's the outside activities and the trailer concerns.
My sticky points are the, the, the noise and the morbidity that's occurring behind the noise. And maybe after a while, nobody will even hear it anymore, because people stop hearing trains and guns all the time. The other thing, too, is the activity that's going to take place in the driveway. If the, if it's a cow and it doesn't die instantly, it's going to be thrashing around and, and making a lot of noise and ruckus in the trailer. And then my third sticky point really is, I don't see how you can not have odor coming out of a dumpster full of raw meat.
Even if it, if you're moved weekly?
If it sits there for two days, it's going to get rancid, it's going to, it's, in my opinion, I think it's going to smell in two or three days. If you move it weekly, and the next day you fill it up again, a week later, it's definitely going to stink. So if it's only a week, if it's, if it goes seven days from when you put it in there, it's going to smell in seven days. I just can't believe they can't offer you a container that has a gasket that will close and keep the odor inside of it. I, I don't think, I'm not sure we, you know, that somebody hasn't done the due diligence required to put that to ease, you know?
I will speak from my research. Most butchers just have a standard dumpster, and they, they haven't had to deal with anything like this.
Yeah. Those are my three concerns. The noise, the activity in the driveway, mostly just, not that they're getting dispatched in the driveway and it's not in a clo- in enclosure, but the neighbors that are maybe hear about something, hear what's going on when things don't go perfectly, you know? It's, it's going to be crappy for the neighbors from time to time.
So we had a previous motion on the table that failed. Ms. Rowden pulled together some revisions to that motion that included...
Do you want me to read the two that are applicable?
That would, yes, please.
The finding of fact would be modified to just be the proposed business activity and presented will not occur outdoors, so it removes anything with the dispatching inside mobile trailers. And livestock brought to the property that requires dispatching shall occur inside the barn and only be allowed by appointment between the hours of nine a.m. to three p.m. Monday through Friday. The dispatching of any animal inside shall occur within thirty minutes of arrival on the property.
Can we dictate the time as long as it's inside the building?
You, yeah, I mean, you can change any part of that.
I was just wondering if we were actually allowed to do that once it's inside? I mean, if he wants to keep culling there.
If anything, I would ask for more time, because now there's question of moving. Now that, now that you're trying to get the animal inside.
If you need to.
You'd have to put the waste inside also to, just listening to what, every, with the waste that we're talking about.
I think the waste we already had inside a...
The way it's worded, the waste would all be inside?
Inside...
A dumpster or a contain, a containment unit, whatever you want to call it. I don't know if dumpster's an appropriate word. Inside a structure.
Inside a structure.
So it's double-contained? So it, the way we currently have that proposed motion sitting there, all activities would be conducted, the conditions are everything would be inside?
The only thing that would be outside would be animals being brought onto the property and brought into the accessory structure.
Okay. Any other discussions on that?
So they're not being dispatched in the trailer?
Correct.
So you're going to walk a cow into the shop and do it inside?
That is...
If that's what it takes to get approved.
That is, the motion that is sitting on the table is that animals cannot be dispatched in a, outside of the structure.
So, so to be clear, no motion has actually been made with the everything occurring inside. We've just suggested modification.
The straw or proposed, yeah, conditions for a motion sitting there. But at least in my opinion, sorry, my opinion, it better complies with all home-based business operations have to be conducted inside a structure.
Want to try this one more time and see what happens?
It's up to you, I can't make it.
I'll make another motion to approve with the amendments.
I'll second it.
Mr. Papakristas seconded it, the motion. Okay, Mr. Eddy?
If you'd like a moment to think, I can move to somebody else.
Yeah.
Mr. Marshon?
Aye.
Mr. Papakristas?
So it's all moved inside now?
Yep.
Aye.
Mr. Gibbons?
Aye.
Mr. Ryan?
I'm still a nay. I still believe it has a negative impact on the character of the neighborhood and the surrounding ballpark, and I think the noise that is emitted from the business will be an insult to the neighbors.
Mr. Eddy?
Yeah, even with those concessions, I can't get over what Jim just mentioned as well.
So that's a yes?
No, nay.
And Mr. Moran? This is an interesting one for me. This is actually the first time in six, I've been on the board six years now, that we've I will say yes.
Or a no?
No, that's an aye.
Aye, thank you. Mr. Chairman on a vote of five to one... Mr. Chairman, on a vote of five to one, the...
Four to two.
Four to two.
Mr. Eddy was a no, and Jim was a no.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Eddy, I... On a vote of four to two, the application has been approved with the new list of conditions.
Jen, can you explain the appeal process for this if there is concern?
Should anyone be aggrieved of the decision tonight? They will have thirty days to appeal that decision to Superior Court. It does not go to the zoning board like most zoning appeals because of the nature of the conditional use permit. So thirty days is the timeframe.
From when that decision is issued or...
Which is today.
Okay, it is today.
And then what? Superior Court would be who you would appeal to?
Okay.
So a notice of decision has to be issued within five days, although Jim typically can do that a little bit faster. And I would caution that because of the appeal period, anything you do to pull any building permits, anything like that, is at your own risk. Should an appeal be successful?
And the board would like to thank everybody for coming, their due diligence, their input, that they've given all of us.
You did hear her comment, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Could it be restated?
That, there's a thirty-day window.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Does anybody need a break or can we, can we continue to roll? Next on the agenda, we have some board business. One Twenty Five Development Corporation is on our... Okay, we're gonna take a quick recess. Unless you guys want, you, you want to stick around, right? You're already here.
I'll tell you, all of my updates are very short.
Oh, we got you, too.
We do have you.
We, we still got four days. If we want.
Yeah, I just put those on pretty much before I went to...
Yeah.
That was a, that was a knock.
Yeah.
Slather pays the big bucks.
Yeah. Oh, well.
I actually retired early since I became a planning board member.
What's that?
I said, I've retired early since taking this on.
I'm so excited. I get to do this tomorrow and Thursday and then next week.
It's the season.
Monday, Tuesday? No, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday next week, yeah.
Wait, you just said my list for next, the meeting on the twenty-sixth.
But it's, it's better being on that side.
What are you talking about?
Two subdivision on this.
Always. We're gonna set that up.
Yep. The first project I ever stance went to Superior Court.
Oh, yeah.
Every project we work on in Portsmouth goes to Superior Court.
A lot of money to appeal.
And one is an applicant, too.
It's, it's hard.
And a rears up for four years. I need to phase rears before I take the application. It's six dollars and forty-eight cents.
Okay.
Let's go, let's go.
Three thirty's gonna come early for you to...
Trevor, go ahead. I'm carrying this thing from Mackenzie Oil.
I haven't had a chance yet.
But then again, the guy over there in the tent sure knows this, like eleven bucks.
Ooh, I heard it.
These people are so...
Okay, Keith is back. Next on the agenda is One Twenty Five Development Corp. Barry, how are you today?
I am well. So since the last time we were here, well, our purpose of being here tonight is we're trying to get a final approval compliance for our Southern New Hampshire industrial park phase two. The last time we were here, we were asked to provide a detailed listing of all the changes that have, um, we've made to the plans since conditional approval by the planning board. I provided that electronically on Friday. Other than that, I don't really have anything, except we would, we were hoping to get an accounting of the, the Nipper's account just to make sure that, I understand that it's, uh, in arrears and we want to see what that's gonna cost it.
Sure, um, let's talk about that first because that's pretty easy. Jim, do you know what their NEBRA balance is or negative? I, it's...
Right at, right at the moment with the, with this NEBRA, it's five hundred and sixty-eight dollars. That does not include any bills that are coming in and it does not include any recording fees.
Okay, so we're...
I would say about, at least a thousand.
About a, we'll say, so five sixty-eight minus recorded, or in addition to recording fees, the town engineer has, we've requested them to review this, but we haven't heard anything, so...
I sent it to the town engineer as soon as I received it as I'll send it to you and Ms. Rowden.
It's been, what, two?
It's been a few weeks. I have not heard anything from, I didn't know either.
We'll say, yeah, about a thousand dollars, as Jim mentioned, upside down, and then... Right, yeah, right now, that's fine. I, I think we can do that or then we can bring it downstairs to the treasurer. So if you, we'll need some additional money for, um...
Mike's review.
Mike's review time.
A little bit of mine.
A little bit of yours.
Yeah, and any potential legal that comes in.
Okay, so, I mean, to square up, say a thousand plus an additional, what do we typically do? A thousand at a time or...
Yes, however, they still also have sixty-nine dollars outstanding on their compliance hearing.
So the five sixty plus sixty-nine dollars is the negative.
Okay, so if One Twenty Five Development deposits twenty-five hundred dollars into the NEBRA account will be good for a little while.
I'll talk to the, because I think there are technically two separate NEBRA accounts. One was with the compliance hearing, one is...
Yeah, but...
I'll talk to the treasurer about whether or not she can divide it up.
Okay, you, you're not sure if she can take them from different accounts?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I offer a suggestion then?
Just write two checks?
Write two checks.
Yeah.
The compliance hearing for the sixty-nine dollars, you're not gonna need any more on, so...
Okay, we can, we can do two checks.
I would do, that would seem simpler.
Do you want to do twenty-five hundred and a hundred and then we can...
That, that, that's perfect.
The balance will refund you? Okay.
I think we were looking for a, an accounting of all the past as well, is how possible. I mean, it has to be.
For the project?
Yeah.
I would say, yes, it's possible. Can I give that to you right now?
No, 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 I understand you can't do it right now.
But yes, we can get you...
I, I sent, I've sent in the one on the compliance hearing with the, with the sixty-nine dollars and some change or rearage. That, that was sent to Joneson Beach.
Okay.
And the one that is big time outstanding, that has not been completed yet because it still has items.
Okay, so we are working to assemble that information.
Yeah.
But we will get that off to you.
Yeah, I mean, just what's spent today.
That, yes, there's no reason why we should not be able to get that to you.
Right.
Okay. And then, um, thank you for the detailed list of changes to the drawings. I haven't had a chance to go through all this. Jen, have you?
Um, so I reviewed generally. I did not review any compliance with some of the engineering components that you really need my good knowledge to do. I do have one specific comment and it's the first condition, if you want me to go through that.
Sure.
Um, so the condition of all federal, state, and local permits, specifically the DOT driveway permit, which allows for two buildings, not all four, given the conditions they put on it. I'm concerned about that permit not matching what the town has approved. So I do have, I do have two suggestions as potential ways to mediate that. So to get the four buildings, you would have had to do some roadway modifications, which is why I alligated you the, the partial DOT permit.
May I ask a question?
I'm fine with that.
That's not necessarily the case. That's why they haven't given us the permit for all four. Is with the calculations that we currently have and the driveway, or the traffic study, it said that the mitigation would be required on one oh eight. But DOT recognizes that that's using the calculations from the manuals. We're going, they suggested that we do actual traffic studies to determine what's out there after construction of the first two buildings. That may not require additional mitigation on one oh eight, so...
So I'll, I'll concur with that. That is, that is what it says. But I am still concerned that the permit that you've been granted at this juncture is for two buildings, not four buildings. The DOT permit limits the type of traffic to buses and the fire trucks you modeled the driveway permit on. You can't have bigger construction without flaggers and a detail. So my concern is that the two basically don't match. What you approved for buildings, what DOT approved is two buildings. I think there are two courses of action that you can certainly discuss because you're not here for a hearing. Either doing a compliance hearing to have that DOT permit match what the plan says and there might be some notes that need to be modified, but I don't think it modifies the rest of the application. Or you could do an amended site plan to phase the two buildings. But my concern with the compliance hearing, if that's the way you go, that might be the easier route, is to ensure that all of the drainage structures associated with all four buildings get built. The building, the second, and I'm sorry, the third and fourth building wouldn't have to be built, but the actual infrastructure for the site as you proposed it would need to be built, the parking lots, the turning. That's my concern.
So just to confirm, so you're saying your suggestion is that we have two options? A compliance hearing on what the site plan has basically proposed?
Yep.
Or modify, or a, modified or amended site plan for just the two buildings?
Right, if you say only wanted to do half the parking lot because that's all you wanted to do. That, I think, would be an amended site plan.
Your, your concern is that if they, if we get a, if we go with a compliance hearing and the board agrees that they would have to construct all the infrastructure?
Yes, they would have to construct the buildings, but at least the drainage infrastructure and turning and all of that.
Right. Well, I just want to say that, and we'll discuss it afterwards, but they are hundred percent intending to build four buildings. And the infrastructure will be constructed, so that's most likely the way it goes. We'll discuss and get back with you guys.
I guess my suggestion is just that notes elaborate to that effect, that all the infrastructure would be put in, even if only the first two buildings are what is built.
So the compliance hearing would modify the conditions, saying that the applicant would have to complete the... And maybe this, this is probably your intent, but they would have to complete a traffic study to gain approval from DOT that the, even though there's four buildings there, the traffic is minimal? Or something along those lines?
So I would suggest that they would not be able to build buildings three and four until an updated DOT permit has been issued as part of the modification of the conditions.
You worded that much better than I did, thank you.
Or maybe CO.
Or, or CO.
Because, I mean, they, any construction that would be beyond the first two buildings would be at their own risk.
Fully understand.
So they could put up two buildings that couldn't be occupied.
I guess my suggestion is just to have it be that what you have approved matches what they currently have a DOT driveway permit for. I think there's a few ways you can go about it. I think that is, they need to discuss it, but I think the goal is to have what you approved match what DOT has approved and not have that mismatch because it will potentially lead to misunderstandings in the future.
Does that make sense?
Tom Blackboard for the applicant. So you're, you're trying to get it so you're thinking that we're only gonna build two buildings, but you want to put the wording in that we can try, complete all the drainage structures together with it? With the two first two buildings? I'm trying to understand like what your intent is.
It has nothing to do with the drainage structures themselves, other than what the town approved is different than what the state approved. So we're trying to clarify that you, One Twenty Five does not have permission from, or approval from the town? Or, can you?
So, I mean, we, we're, we're, so the applicant would be unable to occupy buildings three and four without a revised DOT permit? That has, I mean, we currently have a DOT permit that says we can occupy buildings one and two. So I understand if you say you have to install the infrastructure and I don't think the applicant would have an issue with that. I mean, I will discuss, but the DOT, you know, controls their own permits.
Right, but the DOT doesn't provide occupancy permits either.
No, but the town does. So the town could hold the occupancy, occupancy permit unless we had the DOT permit that said we can build buildings three and four. And it doesn't put the town at any risk because you guys control occupancy and it doesn't put DOT at risk. It only puts the applicant at risk.
So my other concern, besides just the occupancy of the building, is ensuring that that roadway is of sufficient design and capacity, not, not the intersection where DOT has its jurisdiction, but the rest of it is designed to be able to be in compliance with DOT's permit. Because right now, they would not be allowed to have tractor trailers go up that road at that intersection per DOT's permit without flaggers and signage. That, that's my concern. I, I want them to be able to do the project. But having the town approval and DOT's approval talk to each other, I think is really important for this project.
Since we're just trying to get all the paperwork to match one another so that issues don't arise if there is a problem to where this isn't the same as this, like that other building that we talked about before. So that everything, when somebody goes to look at it later down the road, they can say everything was done in accordance as DOT and as the town approved. See what I'm saying? So that there's no...
I fully, I fully understand we're just saying, Bob, right? But as an owner and an applicant, right? We don't have the say as to AOT, DOT, fishing game.
We get that.
But let me finish, right, in that how they accept it. You didn't, you didn't squawk about when I had to give up eleven acres for the turtles. It's a totally different plan if you back out eleven acres. And, and with AOT, AOT does restrictions. And I talked to Roger Appleton for about an hour, who is gonna attend the meeting that we're gonna have in that he, he fully explained that he... he, he fully explained that he will come and explain it to you. I have every intentions to build that road all the way through to Phase One. The state is fully expecting us to build the housing. There's, there's financially, there's no point of return for me. I've got way too much money paid to this guy and all the infrastructure, everything. There's, there's no point of return. I'm gonna build everything in that park. And it, that, that's, that's a known fact. But what it is, is we're not gonna tell, just like fishing game, you know, we're not gonna give you eleven acres. We had to give them eleven acres for, for turtles. You, you know, AOT, we might've done, had to do something different for that application. We're not gonna tell, me and you as the board, are not gonna tell the state of New Hampshire, DOT, how they're gonna accept that intersection. I have every intentions of building all four buildings and Roger knows that. And at the end of this, when we build the first two buildings, and, and the study is performed and completed, we might not have to do the intersection. The study might say, you're all set. We don't have, so, I mean, it, it might say that you gotta do half of it. It might say you gotta do more than what's on the plan. We don't know what's gonna arrive after the study, but we're not gonna tell the state, you're not gonna do that study. You know, we're not gonna accept that. That's the only way we can comply to the...
You understand all that, and like Jen said, we want you to build your buildings. We want you to do everything that you're trying to do out there. But what we're trying to do is protect you and protect the town, so that all the paperwork meshes and is one, you know what I'm saying?
And with the...
So if some way down the road, something was to happen, where you try to go sell one of those buildings and then a financial group says, well, wait a minute, there's a set of plans here, there's a set of plans there, and why are they different? They should be together. See what I'm saying?
With all due respect, your project is, it's a large project for Newton. This is the process you go through for any land development project in the state of New Hampshire. It's pretty straightforward. It's prescribed. It's defined. Like, I've worked on lots of projects that are much larger than yours in New Hampshire. There's a pathway for this. We're not different. Quite honestly, the town of Newton is very easy to work in compared to other municipalities in the state. I'm sorry that you feel like you have a difficult time with DOT and AOT and fishing game, but they're fairly easy entities to work with.
I'm, I'm, I'm totally happy with Roger. Roger Appleton has been a pleasure to work with. All he's saying is we build the first two buildings, we do the study, and, you know, maybe we don't have to do any improvements to the intersection. Maybe we have to do all of them. But until that study is, until we build the first two buildings, the study is done, none of us in this room is gonna know what the state is gonna require, so...
So you have a permit?
So I fully agree with you. We don't know what they're going to, I hope that you don't have to make modifications. It's just easier for everybody. But to protect the town to ensure that what they have approved matches, that is why I'm suggesting this, because we don't know what DOT is going to say. Maybe, maybe you don't have to do anything. Maybe you have to do a lot. That, that's why I'm trying to get the two plans to talk to each other, to avoid them not speaking to each other, and then there's this mismatch causing you headache and the town headache.
So all we're saying is like, we agree with DOT, we just want what the town approved to, at today, or to agree with DOT. And then tomorrow, I'm just picking tomorrow, when the buildings are occupied, you get your traffic study, I think it's a pretty streamlined process to say, hey, there's only two cars a day going to these buildings. The other buildings are only gonna have two more cars. It's not an issue. Let's move forward. Just so that everything is consistent and clean. Not trying to slow you down.
Well, I, I, I fully understand what you're saying, but, so, we build these two buildings, we go through the process, we get this verbiage corrected, then we come to the four buildings, we get those done, we'll do what necessary to be done. Then we add the workforce housing into it. We'll be back in again on AOT. Then we add Phase Three. We'll be back in AOT. We'll be doing this over and over and over and over and over again, so AOT's kinda thinking like, um, let's see what we do here, 'cause we, we, some of the buildings are warehouses. They have no people in them, essentially, in the end, right? And, you know, you might have eighty thousand square feet and four people. And, you know, the tractor trailer traffic is, well, we, we can't judge by what's coming at this point right now, so...
I would say that's part of the process.
There's a lot of fluid, like, there's a lot of fluid pieces to it, so I'm saying, so if we do this just at one time, we'll be doing this a lot, so if we're gonna be doing this, we need to set up a vehicle to make this all the way through it.
There's a vehicle in place.
Well, there, so that's, so I, I don't wanna do an amended site plan only for the fact that it opens the whole project up again for...
So that's why I was suggesting two different potential paths.
Right.
One's a compliance hearing. It's most likely just modifying some notes on the plan for the first condition related to the DOT permit. That, that's changing some notes and making sure that, you know, you are only having buses and small vehicle traffic.
So we do the compliance hearing. That's gonna happen at the front of the board?
That would need to happen in front of the board. I think that is probably a quicker process than maybe doing a potential phased amended site plan.
But, but it doesn't require a public meeting again?
It does require a public meeting, but it's only on that condition.
Okay.
Not the entire site.
So if you're changing a similar thing, it's like it's changing from a landscape company to a gym.
Right. I get you. Yeah.
Nobody has any objections, the conditions aren't changing. It's probably, you know, it's, it's not, most people probably wouldn't bat an eye at it.
Right.
An amended site plan is like any other site plan that's...
So we just, we just keep adding cheese to our site plan eventually? As we meet these conditions?
I think for what I'm suggesting, this is making a couple of small modifications to some of the notes on your plan.
Okay.
And having a compliance hearing, which does have to be noticed, but it's only for that one small condition. Or that one condition, I won't say small condition, on your plan set.
So do we gotta make application do that, or this is something which is formality?
That would have to require a very simple application explaining, and you obviously should discuss it amongst yourselves.
Yeah.
Modifications to help address that the other buildings would not be able to be, you can propose occupied if you want, or building permit.
Okay.
That is what I'm suggesting, and that can be applied for. It is a public notice, but it's a fairly straightforward process. It, um, it's the same process for the, uh, bond amount that you guys did a couple of months ago for that compliance hearing, where we only talked about the bond. It's that same process.
Okay, alright.
So it will take a two-week period, but it's not gonna take a six-month period.
So the, the goal is not necessarily to change what was already approved.
Correct.
Just document that...
This is what's happening.
This is what's happening.
Okay.
So, like, all your drainage infrastructure, the roads, the building square footage, that's all the same.
We're in agreement to take that route then. We'll make application for it.
Um, I will say that'll also give Mike Pignelli more time to do a thorough review and press through the full list of changes that were made. Which I didn't see any red flags, but I can't speak to the engineering part of it.
Thank you very much.
Easy peasy.
Sorry to keep... Guy's so late.
We are too.
Okay. Next is approval of the meeting minutes from the twenty-second of October.
I'll make a motion to move the meeting minutes.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, the math on the NEPR account works. Six, seven...
The amount on NEPR is eight hundred fifty-eight dollars and...
Eighty-seven cents. I was just adding it all up in my head. The cents work.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Was that Mr. Givens?
No.
Andrew.
Oh, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jen, you got three minutes.
So I, I have some minor amendments to the protection ordinance that we need to discuss, but I would like it your meeting in two weeks. I'm gonna need at least half an hour. I'm hoping that we can get it moved to a public hearing, so you don't have to make any decisions on the twenty-sixth, but I think just because of timing and not wanting to come to a Christmas Eve planning board meeting, if we can consider moving it to a public hearing at the next meeting, I will send you the updated draft in the next day or two, but it's very minor compared to what we talked about last month. And no update on the New Hampshire Housing Grants should appear by the next meeting. I think that was a minute and a half.
Pretty good.
So that's...
I have a really quick one. Does anybody want to go to the New Hampshire Municipal Association? Well, you're well addressed that. Does anybody other than Mr. Moran wish to go for training?
When is it?
I'm assuming it's during the week?
It's this coming Saturday.
Oh, no.
And it's all done.
Going away.
I will be attending. I will get as many of the publications as I can, give you the list of what will be available, and I will print out a lot of the people.
Real quick, I, I went to the last meeting for the Rockingham Transportation, and actually Continental Pavement got the job down here at the intersection.
Uh-huh.
And they scrapped, they didn't scrap it. It got bumped down a year. There's a bridge job, um, over railroad. Oh, I can't think of the name of the road.
Of railroad?
Yeah, over railroad tracks.
In Oak County?
No, no, in Newton.
Oh.
It got, it got...
I know exactly where you're talking about.
I'm sorry.
Right?
It was supposed to go all...
By the campground?
Yeah, I think so. It's a, it's a good-sized job. It's like three, four million bucks. It's supposed to go all...
That wooden bridge that Paul said about the time?
Could be.
I, I can't, but they moved it a year 'cause of funding.
It's probably on Pond Street.
So, yes.
Yeah, right, right next to the, um...
We can drive an engine over that. We can drive an engine over that bridge.
Did a year, but they also said if this funding that comes available, they, they move money around a lot.
Oh, really?
I didn't know it was that bad, but we've never been able to drive an engine over that.
Okay.
We have to go deep someplace.
Nothing else? Adjourned at nine forty-one. Thank you, Tim.
Wow.
By the way.
It has it as duty page.
So let me ask you for shit's a go, is why didn't you feel that...